He says you open it.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Welcome to the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Ashland School Committee meeting. This evening, we will begin by reading our vision statement. I'll make an announcement. The hybrid meeting, we do not, the Zoom link is not working currently, but this is available through WACA. It's being recorded and will be available for folks. The Ashland Public Schools is a forward-thinking district that cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated, resilient, lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. As I said, this is being recorded by WACA TV. The timeline in order of business this evening, call to order, agenda review and adoption, public comment, items of interest, and administrative items is the reorganization of the Ashland School Committee, the request for approval of the Give the Kids the World overnight trip to Florida in November of twenty twenty-three, superintendent's update, assistant superintendent's update, warrant approvals, acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports on activities, member updates and action items, and then we will adjourn. Any questions on the agenda? No. I'll open it up to the public to be recognized. I seeing none. We will move forward. First order of business is, as we've just had recent elections for the town in the school committee, we are now in the process of reorganizing the chair, vice chair, and the secretary for the Ashland School Committee. So I will open and ask for nominations for the chair of the Ashland School Committee for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four School Committee.
I'd like to nominate Lori to continue on in her role as the chair. I think it kind of seems like we always come back to the conversation, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I'm certainly supportive of Lori continuing on this role, and congratulations, by the way. Glad to have you back.
And do we have a second? Mr. Kendall, second. Comments?
I am fine with that, and that would be great. My only consideration was with the boys graduating next year and the involvement of the chair with graduation activities. It hasn't the sometime, I know last year there was not a speech, but sometimes in years past there has been, and just if there was any consideration of that. That's it.
The boys graduate.
Theirs.
We both have sons graduating next year.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep. I appreciate that. I don't know what graduation's gonna look like going forward. I thought we kind of put the focus on making that more student-centered or trying to maintain it that way, and we kind of pulled ourselves out because people aren't really interested in here from school.
We've been peeling back.
Yeah.
Adult speaking.
Correct. But I also think if there was a place for that, something we could deal with.
Yeah, just like sometimes.
Certainly, if I were chair and that opportunity came our way, I'd be happy to turn that over to anybody. I did not, the past couple of years, I, as chair, have not spoken because they have preferred that we not, to be honest.
Including me.
Yeah, Jim and Kelly, you know, felt that that ceremony should be a little quicker, so it's not even something I've done, but certainly I'm not in any way gonna stand in anyone's way if they want an opportunity to be front and center at graduation, because I have, I did it for, I think, three out of my four kids, and it is a really nice honor. And I think at the very least, and even if we don't speak, if you're, if you're on the school committee and your child's graduating, I know it's been a past tradition, whether you're chair or not, that you should be able to stand up there and hand your child their diploma. So if that's a concern, I just wanted to share that. Yeah.
Yeah, great. I appreciate Tracy's point here, but it doesn't change our motion.
So no further discussion. We'll take a vote. Mr. Kendall?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Fattanides?
Aye.
Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Ms. Tosti?
Aye.
Sure. Great.
If you're willing to accept.
I will turn it over to the chair now to.
Thank you. I'm back in the meeting.
Nice job, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good job. Thanks, everybody. I really, I'm really happy to still be here with all of you, and I appreciate your confidence in me. So, and the feeling's mutual. Anyone of you could do this. So, thank you for your support, and thank you. I'm grateful that I'm here. I'm looking for nominations for vice chair.
In the same vein of it ain't broke, I would nominate Mark.
Senator.
Vice chair.
All right. Any discussion? Are you willing?
I'm willing.
Are you able?
We'll find out.
If there's, if there's still questions after the last few years.
All right. It seems to work for us. So all in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye for me. And secretary, I know you both have done it at one time or another. I don't know if anybody has a feeling about wanting to do it this year or continuing to do it.
It's mostly just the executive ones, right?
For the most part. I think we do have somebody, is it Gretchen, that watches our meetings?
Yes, and she writes all the minutes and works through it.
Yeah.
Signing papers.
But, but when we don't have a recorded meeting, yes, one of us needs to be in charge of that.
Okay. I'm happy to still do it, but if you want to, feel free. Yeah. Are you sure? I've never had a seat or like a.
A job?
Yeah.
Do you want one?
Sure.
Okay.
Then I will nominate Erin Williams for secretary.
I would second that.
All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. Done. We're back. All right. On a much better note, the fun part of the meeting. X, yeah. My favorite people in the whole world, the Give Kids the World gang. Who's, is someone gonna come up and share some information about what y'all do? Are you all gonna come up?
Nice.
Please. We'd love to hear from.
Right to the podium. Please make sure you introduce yourself, your grade, your role within the organization.
Hello. My name is Kira Cooney, and I am the Give Kids the World Trip Coordinator for the Ashland High School Make-A-Wish Club, and we are here seeking approval to participate in our eighth service trip to Give Kids the World. A quick update for your papers in front of you, the dates have changed a tiny bit. We will be departing on November eighth out of Providence and returning on November thirteenth out of Worcester. This is to get cheaper flights and to lower the cost of the trip overall. In this year, we'd have the same goals as our previous years, which is to complete seven shifts in different areas of Give Kids the World, including food service, entertainment, and amusement. We hope to bring forty kids on the trip with priority given to club members who have been the most active and have shown the most participation in events and meetings. We will also have a waitlist, particularly if sports or other club responsibilities interfere with people's ability to travel to the trip, and people will be taken off the waitlist with priority, once again, given to those who have been the most active overall. And we also just wanted to share one thing that we've each taken away from Give Kids the World. So I will start. My thing that I always bring back from this trip is the smiles on the kids' faces. They really stick with you forever because they just have some of the biggest smiles I've ever seen kids have, and you know they're going through a hard time, but they're still smiling through it.
Hi, I'm Jordan. I'm the community service coordinator of the club, and something that I take away from the trip, or something that I would say as a whole, is that I feel like it's such an important life lesson to learn the importance of what you're giving to others can do, and I feel like this is a firsthand experience in which you can really see that and put that into action, and then take that back with you home and for future life.
Thanks, Jordan.
Hi, my name's Sophia, and I'm a senior, and I think something really important that everyone on the trip has taken back with them is knowing the impact of our actions, however small or big you think the action is. At the village, there's a lot of different shifts and opportunities for you to volunteer, from busing in the kitchen or helping out in the castle where you can help the kids put up their stars that each wish kid puts up. And no matter the role that you play in the village, it's really special to see how grateful all the families are, whether you're behind the kitchen or you're helping them in the castle. And I think that's really important to know how powerful your actions can be and the impact that you can make in your community.
I'm Cassie Washburn, and I'm the secretary for the club. And the thing I always take away is that knowing that this is often their, these families and these kids, their first vacation and their first time getting away from what their life has been like, and that's really special to see, just like Kira said, all their smiles, just knowing that this is the first time they're getting to experience something like that.
I'm Sienna, and I'm the vice president of the club, and I take away that they're just so, like, appreciative of everyone there and just everything we do, the impact that we have on their lives. They just really appreciate everything, whether, like, reaching out to Ms. Shields after the trip, like exchanging emails. They just really appreciate it so much and are so grateful that we are there for them.
My name's Ashley. Sorry, my voice. I'm battling a cold at the moment, but I'm the club treasurer, and my biggest takeaway, I've gone on this trip twice, and I can say both times that it's just so incredible to see the impact of what we're doing here in Massachusetts with all of our fundraising and all the hard work that myself, Ms. Shields, and this amazing board puts in. We get to see the impact of that firsthand, and I just think that that's something truly life-changing. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Very well done. And I've seen all of you in action, and it's just way beyond what they're even articulating. And I've said it before, but in case there's somebody new that happens to tune into this recording, I think it's worth repeating, and Ms. Shields can back this up. This is a volunteer, organization run almost exclusively by volunteers, right? So they see volunteers three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But every time we go, we get pulled aside by the directors of the program, and they're very sincerely telling us that our group in particular, they are so impressed with Ashland. We come, everybody's working so hard, they're taking it seriously. They can tell, the kids ask to do more than they're required. I mean, the adults just walk away beaming because of how much, right, Ms. Shields? I mean, it really is, and it's very sincere, too. Like, it's obvious that they're not, it's not something that they're saying to everybody. These kids really stand out, and I think we can all be really proud. And I can, on the other side of, it's not just how well, you know, we look in other people's eyes, but I can see, you know, the students changing from, you know, I think I'll go on this trip, and they don't really know what to expect, and you can tell almost the moment when, you know, they become aware of their impact on these families, and it's something that, you know, once you have that experience, you never forget it and hopefully want to keep do, finding some way to do it in your life. So I think it's one of the best things that, you know, we're able to offer, and that we can be so proud of all our students that participate. And Ms. Shields, of course, does a phenomenal job with the program. We've raised tens of thousands of dollars for Make-A-Wish Massachusetts, or is it Rhode Island?
Mass and Rhode Island.
Mass and Rhode Island. So I just wanted to add that because it's, we, that you guys make Ashland proud, and that reflects back to all of us. So thank you for that.
Can I just ask, how many students participate in the, in the club altogether? Hundred and seventy-seven?
Very popular club.
Yeah, that's great. I wish you could take more kids. That's all I'm saying.
I know. And it regularly, I mean, we have at least half capacity every single time. Most clubs set up really strong.
Can you come up to the?
I know. She does, sorry. You almost got away.
I have a question for you anyway, so you weren't gonna get away.
You might as well stand there. Yeah. We have a hundred and eighty-ish members, and every month, many, many participate in regular meetings. Many are signing up to volunteer. Most clubs start off really strong in September and start to wane. I love my Model UN club, but we're not even meeting on Wednesdays anymore because no one's showing up. So it's awesome to see that we sustain the passions there. Matter of fact, this amazing group of student leaders is going to headquarters next week, and they've been asked to create a video talking about what they've done and how they've kept the momentum going all these years because they want to show it to other youth groups, high schools, and college programs to inspire them to do the same. So it's pretty impressive.
That's great.
Yeah, thanks. And I, Mark, if I can just address to the reason why more kids, part of the reason, right? Like, you can only fit so many kids on a, on a bus, you know, and there's so many chaperones, and there are so many jobs at the facility. So it's based on that. It's, I mean, obviously, I think you'd probably love to give more people opportunities, but it's dictated by those outer things and not, it's not something that Ms. Shields is only choosing to limit it?
So although they have tons of shifts there all the time, for youth groups, they only provide us certain kinds of shifts that they can have forty of. So, you know, Ms. Tosti will always drive, you know, the cart around, but the cookie cart, we could not drive around. So there's only certain kinds of shifts that a youth group can do, and ages actually preclude us from doing a lot of the service shifts that they have there. So we would love to take more. It's, you know, I think having more than that, it just becomes a little bit more unmanageable, and I want to keep the integrity. I want to be able to see how it's unfolding. You know, we just, you know, it's just an amazing opportunity. I think any more than that, we'll be losing some people to, we won't be able to fill shifts for them, so.
Forty is still a great size group, though.
It is. It's perfect. You know, anymore, I think I would get a little anxious, you know, forty on a plane. Like, we got, there was one year that we went and we had a six, eight-hour layover, I mean, delay, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, we flew out. It was a lot of bodies to keep entertained for a long time, so just you think of the what-ifs. So that is a perfect amount, so.
So I'll ask the question I ask most of the groups that come that have a financial component to it, is, and it's about equity. You know, if it's fifteen hundred dollar a trip, how are we ensuring, not just that, I know that if somebody came forward and wanted to go, we would make that happen, but also ensuring that people are comfortable coming forward regardless of that cost? How we, how we ensure that people are, feel comfortable coming forward and saying, hey, I want to do this, you know, forget about the cost, and what can you do to make sure that that's happening? Maybe you're already doing it.
Well, that has just been on an individual basis through my experiences, helping our own facilitator through the years. At every single class meeting, we're telling students, if there's an opportunity you want to participate in and finances aren't available, come and have a private conversation. In my experience with this trip, no one has ever come forward with it, but it had, they have on other trips. So we would pay, like, the last payment. We 'd talk about what's affordable, what's not. You know, if you have a part-time job, can you chip away at it rather than that one lump sum you pay September eighth? There's a way to have a conversation. The problem with this trip, the money doesn't come to us. This goes to the travel advisor, and she coordinates. So any kind of payment plan would be organized, but it's not to say we haven't done it before, but she is the one who kind of has those conversations. We don't have a pool of money to say we can scholarship three or four kids, but if anybody brought it to my attention, that financial hardship is a challenge. We're gonna see if we can get creative and make something happen to make it a little bit more affordable.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's a standard spiel, like, I say, to almost everyone, because I know if we did get somebody that came forward, but it's also about how do we ensure, and it sounds like you're, you're doing that, how do we ensure that everyone is comfortable saying, I want to participate in that, forget the cost, and making sure they're coming through that proverbial door.
Well, and I think, having seen students come, come to me talking about prom assistance, yearbook assistance, senior week assistance, kids are comfortable approaching me, and they know that I'm gonna help maintain pride and dignity when we have these conversations. So I'd like to think that they would feel comfortable even seeking me out for some kind of, you know, discussion around the financial support for this as well.
Okay, great.
It's just kind of naturally built in place already.
Other questions or comments? And I'll, I mean, I'll just share with you guys. I have chaperoned this trip in the past, and I would do it anytime I am invited, but this year, my daughter's getting married on the date that they'll be gone, so I won't be part of it sadly, but I'd be very happy to be at my daughter's wedding. Just so you know, you know, I'm not, I'm not part of it this one. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So I would move to approve the Give Kids the World trip with dates to be as flexible as needed, approved by Ms. Ancor as presenter.
All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job, ladies. Nice to see your faces again. Good luck this year. Yep. It's all about the merch. Thank you. You as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Do we have a superintendent's update?
Very, very brief. We're coming up on the end of the season in terms of classes for seniors next week and senior week to follow after Memorial Day with graduation on the fourth. So.
What time is graduation due?
Good question. Ten AM or eleven AM. Kelly's moved it. Yeah, it's earlier because of the heat in the gym. We've been trying to adjust it, and we'll make sure we get that exact time out there. And MCAS has been going on over the past week, and will continue with science in maybe two weeks, maybe early June, coming right up.
Science, science is done at the middle school, I believe, and finishing up at the elementary school this week, but high school is coming up. Yeah.
That's really it. It's a lot going on tonight, concerts and art shows, and so we'll try to get out of here so folks can get there.
We're so close. Mike, do you have a report?
Just our last professional development day is Friday, last PD of the year. Excited that we're still working on some great things. We're really focused a lot on giving, providing teachers time this, this year to work on SEI strategies on English learning. So we're giving folks more time to get their PDPs in that area, as well as just doing various other things around literacy, eye-ready, and, you know, a lot of curriculum departmental type of work that folks will be doing on, on Friday afternoon.
Awesome. Do we have any warrant approvals?
You do. Between May fourth, twenty twenty-three and May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of seven hundred, six thousand dollars, sorry, seven hundred, six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents. This includes general fund expenses of six hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-two cents, revolving expenses of sixty-nine dollars, sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and eighteen cents, and grant expenses of twenty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars. I also signed off on one, one million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents of payroll.
Thank you. Gifts and donations?
We do. We have three. Lisa Zager for a hundred dollars for helping our own fund. Plan A, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, seventy-seven cents. And Ohio pile, twenty-four dollars, sixty-six cents from seniors' gifts and donations for a total of three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. Committee reports of activities, member updates. Anybody besides Paul?
I will.
Do you have a big Mendez update that should go last? Go ahead.
So just reported today, we had last high school site council of the year, and there were two primary topics of discussion. One was the school improvement plan and some discussion about working on the equity goals. So that was, that was a really healthy discussion. The one that I think is a newer topic, I think it came up in some of our strategic planning discussions, but it's really around looking at weighting or unwweighting high school grades. And so right now, if you take an AP course and get an A, that's worth more in your GPA than a honors or CP2. And so there's discussion about whether or not we should go to an unweighted system rather than a weighted system, and that included discussion on what to do with tracking class ranks or not. So it's a, it's a point that is just the beginning of the conversation. It's a really healthy conversation, a lot of different perspectives on it, but it is something that a number of school districts in the area have been doing, and I didn't get a chance to look at the data on that, but Ms. Ancor had provided us all with, with some data on schools that, other schools that have made that shift, what process they used, because I envisioned this probably as being a lengthy process, similar to some of the other things we've done in terms of major curriculum changes and things like that. But just want to share that that dialogue is starting, and I'm sure it will be resumed next year with a different group of people in site council. That's all I have.
Well, a lot of us were at the prep meeting for the Reality Fair. The Reality Fair's next Friday morning, so I'm excited about that. And as far as my activities, so I guess the donation piece will be in our next meeting, but I did want to share. So I wrote a children's book. It's finally published. The story was actually written in two thousand and eleven and shelved because I didn't feel like I had the chops to do the illustrations, and also I was a busy mom of a toddler, and then life got in the way. So I'm donating a copy to every teacher that has educated my children, plus one to each library at Pittaway, Warren, and Mendez, and then one extra special one to Ms. Tosti.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looks, looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Paul?
You know, not too much, you know.
Something about a building going on?
Yeah. I could spout on about that for a long time. I mean, the big changes, the gym floor is laid out. They're just letting the moisture get to the right spot, the right place before they start nailing. And if you go over the, under the main entrance, the ceiling, the blue is now on there. They're putting up the metal panels there. A lot of the cabinets are in, a lot of finishes, more of the tile wainscoting. There's just lots going on, and we're inside of two months. It was two months till substantial completion yesterday. So it's hard to believe.
It is hard to believe, considering, you know, years in the making.
Just to give you an update on the tree that is donated by Karen, they did not have the tree that we initially scoped. Well, this is being donated from Western Nursery, so you have to pick something that they can deliver this year, and the tree that was chosen initially, it's nothing they only sparsely stock on occasion, so they went back and forth, and they picked a tall tree that was, it was delivered yesterday. So the, once the, the site, that area that's gonna go in is prepped, it'll be planted, and they're, I've kind of washed my hands of the, of the ceremony thing, trying to help get, connect the people that want to do that kind of coordination, but I think it's gonna be in the fall. I think Dennis threw up, maybe sometime in October, probably early October, I would imagine. So other updates at Mendez that I'm not thinking of, Jim?
No, I mean, I'm just busy. It's just every day you walk in, it's something new.
Yeah, I texted him a picture today that wood panelings are, so like, if you remember on the commons, those pillars by the window, they all get wrapped in wood, so those are, we're going up today. There's, you know, so there's, there's always.
Yeah, our classroom looks great.
Yeah, the, you know, the indoor courtyard, interior courtyard, that design. Lots going on.
I did take a tour recently with Jim and some teachers. I mean, if you miss a week, the whole building, if you miss a day, yeah.
Particularly, particularly now, because, like I said, it's inside of two months.
The furniture, there's furniture and there's painting. It's so exciting.
Installed in the office, main office here.
Yeah.
What's being installed?
Furniture, next week or two in the main office here.
Yeah, the fixed furniture.
So does it look, like, if you walked in, would you say it looks kind of finished except for the few things that aren't, or is it still like?
Well, so what, what makes it not look finished, so that they're, they're closing up, they're still closing up the ceilings. They're all, all the grids are there, but one of the things they have to wait for is the inspections and stuff. There's, because there's so much up there. You have lots of, lots of things up there that need inspection, so they close that up. They're waiting as long as they can for that to get closed up before they do the corridors, flooring for the corridors and things like that, because obviously you need, you clean, you need to be clean for adhesive and stuff like that. So, but they're gonna start the flooring, I believe, next week. They're gonna start the pavers on the roof, the outdoor classroom on the roof. Yeah, there, there's just always, like I said, it's inside of two months now, and so it's, things are gonna be changing very.
That's like a kitchen project. Yeah, if they're lucky.
Right. Will there be an event, like, with the wrecking ball going into the old campus, like a viewing party or anything?
Paul of a plan.
That's on my plate. I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna do.
See, I do, my wife says I don't delegate all that stuff. I.
Delegate something to me, which I love to do, too.
I happily, you know, shirk that responsibility.
Seems like it might be a good idea that you guys are sitting far apart right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
But at some point after the end of school, there might be something where we go over and we'll.
No, I, I mean, it's not, that's not the way it's coming down.
There's no wrecking ball coming. They're using.
And, and it's such a, the, the summer is so tight, you know, so the summer is so tight. So I guess the other updates, you know, we, the town, through, through the town manager's office, did send out some, some letters to the, there's some residents that tend to park at that, at the end of the exit. So we ran plates, and the police ran plates and got addresses and sent, sent those notices out last week.
You talking about on Fisk, or are you talking about?
No, no.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, on, on the, on the exit of Mendez.
Yeah, I got it.
Because, and, and that, that notice basically said, at the end of, after the school's, school's out, there's no more parking, and that Friday, the twenty-third, is when any, anybody that still remains will be, start to get towed. So that notice went out. We'll also put some, you know, I've been talking with Chief Rossi, she'll, she'll have them put some notices on, on some cars. I, I might get some yard signs made to put out there, and then, you know, once, once the end of school hits, you know, she and I will knock on doors if we have to, to try to get people so they're not getting towed. But, so, but it's, it's gonna happen quickly after that. So there's, with this, with our situation, there's not a lot of room for popping circumstance. So even, even, so the counselors will be in there for the remainder, the rest. So even, even, so the counselors will be in there for the remainder, the rest of that week. We're allowing them to do that, but pretty much that next week, yeah, there's nobody in the building. It's coming, it's coming.
Are teachers packed up and left last day of school?
Yeah, so they're packing up, and then we have movers that initially will take and kind of move the stuff into the middle of the building, like in the gymnasium. And then we have, you know, we have storage containers that they'll be moved to, so.
What's the actual last day of school there?
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
The twentieth?
Yeah.
So that's kind of a big deal, like the last day that kids are going to be in that building. Like, even if we could stop by as a group or something.
I was going to say, I'm thinking like, we're going out in town on the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Like, we're going to leave, and it'll be halfway down, and we'll come back and be flat, you know?
The school won't be halfway down. The ends will be down. As soon as that occurs, then, so the demo and abatement sub, that's their top priority, is taking the ends down so the rest of the parking lot and the entrance can be done as well as the loop road around the, around the west side. So that's the crunch time, and then as soon as that security fence gets sucked into where it needs to be for the rest of Phase Two, they can take their sweet time and do whatever they want to. So that's, but it's a tight, it's a tight window in the summer for sure, so.
Jim, where's ESY going to happen, given the building change?
I, I believe ESY is going to be taking place at Warren this year.
This actually came up at the ASHPAC meeting last week, and Brittany was saying that there's actually going to be some ESY sessions in different buildings, that the middle school kids will be at the middle school, Warren and Mendez will be at Warren.
For the elementary, right.
And maybe, I don't know if they do it at Pittaway.
They always have something at Pittaway.
Yeah.
But you have enough space for?
But they'll be spread out a little bit more, yeah.
Excellent. Anything else anyone wants to share before we look for a motion to adjourn?
Just one more item on there. Madam Chair, rookie.
Action items? I know, right? You think that I might have figured out after ten years.
The only thing I was going to mention that, just since, you know, what our committee looks like for the next year, is whether we can start looking at summer retreat dates.
Yes, thank you. Jim and I talked about that earlier a little bit.
Yeah, I thought I'd start pulling some dates together. I told Lori this afternoon that after the meeting tonight, I'll get some dates and start sharing them with folks and see what your vacation plans are, and then go from there. And again, part of it is, we're still working on, Mike and I have been working with PREM, and PREM's been working with our admin team on the rest of the strategic plan in terms of the action items, et cetera. So we have June first and June eighth, two more, two hour sessions with PREM, working with principals and directors, so.
Have you, I mean, I know some years we would only have one day, and other years when our plate is full, we have two days. Have you thought about what might be necessary this year?
I haven't. My guess is it's got to be two. Now, whether they're consecutive or not, again, it's going to vary based on people's schedules. But I think certainly there's enough information that probably two would, would be necessary, including school improvement plans. Partly, the school improvement plans have been on hold for a little while. Their principals now, and Mark alluded to this, they're actually taking the strategic objectives and priorities and compiling information for their specific building to be a part of the school improvement plans. So that's one of the things we're doing right now. So I would anticipate probably two. I just don't know if they'll be consecutive. Again, I'm thoughtful of everybody's vacation schedules.
Is there any consensus just now, before we, obviously, we're not going to figure out the date tonight.
Yep.
But do people in general prefer back-to-back to kind of get into it and be intense and get it done? Or do you prefer one July, one August to not have it impact your work so much?
I kind of like back-to-back. I think it allows us to have deeper conversations and kind of keep it going. But I'm fine with either.
I was actually going to go the opposite, just because it, taking two days out of a week is a little bit harder for me, but it kind of varies week to week.
I mean, the other option, we haven't done on the retreats, but we've done it for budgets.
Weekends.
We can do it Friday, Saturday, or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, and the other thing that I think was helpful in one or two years, it's been a while, was if there was work that had to be done in between.
That's what I was going to say. Sometimes, if we have like the strategic plan and we need to chew on something because we didn't complete it the first day, having that extra, extra time is a good thing. But I'm finding, really indifferent, I think it's more for me about whether there's topics that, that a time in between would be beneficial or not.
If we are going to look at two days in the same week, I'd appreciate looking at all, I guess, I mean, I don't know what everybody else's schedules are, but I'm, we're taking a pretty healthy trip end of June through July fourth, and then I get right into a conference. So I'm like, I'm out for almost three, four weeks into mid-July. And it's just going to be real hard to grab a couple more days there.
Yeah, let me, let me pull some dates together, again, partly because I do want directors and principals to be available for certain things. And as you know, I mean, one of the things that I highly recommend that each of them do is get away for July. I want them away, and it's been a busy year still, and that's really the time they can, they can get away. And they have their principal's conference at the time, superintendent's conference in July, so we'll figure it out.
Yeah. Erin, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, mine's schedule unfortunately conflicts with Mark's. So we're in.
So you're out all of August.
No, no, we're in May, the fourth to the twentieth.
July or August?
August. So I can, it's a three-hour drive to get back. But then I'm leaving poor Phil with two children.
That's what it is.
That might be good for you, you know?
I'm sure he'll be fine.
Sure he can handle.
So either that first week in August before we go, or if we did it split, then I'm only coming one day and only missing one day up there because that's the only time I have.
Yeah, and we'll try to work it out through, through the email.
Yeah, I'll put some dates out there.
Right. I think, right, it's going to.
So I'm actually going away, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is good.
So also throw out some Saturdays, too, right?
Right, I will. No problem.
All right, I hate to interrupt, I got to go.
Yeah.
Goodbye. Yeah. Move second. Okay, the meeting is over, so.